About our candidate. And yes, the recording is going. So it was to educate. We are just creating a forum that will be friendly, welcoming, and there are no gotcha questions. The candidates receive the questions beforehand, except for the lightning round at the end, which are also just fun questions. So everybody take a breath. My opening question tonight, I guess I have to talk about the heat. What's the hottest someone saw today? Did anybody see over 100 in the room? So the volunteers at Sunnyvale Community Services today were serving, and it was 104. Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Marie Bernard, for hosting us as usual and offering your space that is so welcoming and techno- 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 sound, let's put it that way. So we will begin. Our opening statement, candidates have two minutes each, and we will start with Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I'm so happy to be here with an organization that has been instrumental in moving public policy in a direction that is very resident focused. I'm honored to have been the first Latina, the first openly queer member of council. And what I brought to my decisions in public policy and also community engagement was bringing people in and representing those who have never had a voice on the council. Therefore, their interests hadn't been protected in the way that we can have when we have a diverse council. I'm often asked why I decided to run for a second term, and my answer is simple. This is how I can make the biggest impact with my- on my community using the skills that I have as a professional public policy analyst, a community organizer. And I am- this is the honor of my life to serve the community that I grew up in. And so when I look forward to my second term, what I'm confident that I can do is continue to push bold policy that asks our city to do more than what we've already done. We are considered one of the best-run cities in the Bay Area, but we can always do more. And my values align very much with livable Sunnyvale's and very much with residents who have high rents, who are struggling to stay in this area. And I look forward to using my perspectives to represent our residents in the way that they deserve, particularly those who live downtown, who I am proud to represent every single day and in every single council meeting.
Thank you. Next is Jim Davis.
Yes, thank you very much. It's also wonderful to be back here in the public eye and involved in doing things for the public. You know, for 26 years, I was a public safety officer here in the city of Sunnyvale. And it was always refreshing every time I got to go on a call or on some form of public service, be able to meet and do something for our public. Then when I retired in 2011, I was honored by the citizens of the city to be elected to the city council where I served for six years. And during those six years, I became extremely well-informed in regards to how our city government works, how to interact with state government and federal government, and how to make things happen on a local level. So that's what I bring to this election period, is my knowledge, my background, my interest, and my enjoyment in doing things for the public. The biggest thing that we have to look forward to is making sure that our budget can meet our needs in our city. You know, we do the 20-year budgeting cycle, and that's a smart thing to do because it always takes care of some of the most immediate needs. But those needs change from time to time, and we need to change with them. And so that is going to be one of my primary purposes, is to be extraordinarily close in regards to watching what's happening with the budget. The other thing that I am promising the citizens of District 2 is if, when I'm elected, I will make sure that every month, somewhere within the district, I will be holding a neighborhood meeting to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
So thank you. And then Eliza- Elizabeth. Eileen Lay, please.
Thanks so much. My name is Eileen Lay. I am the only person right now on this- at this table who is not or has never been a Sunnyvale City Council member. I am running for Sunnyvale District 6. I am a current Sunnyvale School Board trustee. So I do know how to sit on a dais and push policy, make policy, ask for more for my current constituents. I'm running for Sunnyvale District 6, which is in the far northern part of the city. I live in- I live as far north as you can go unless they let you move into a Google building, which I'm under the impression that you can't actually do. And the thing about District 6 that I find very interesting is that it is a great example of a livable, walkable community where you can choose what restaurants you want to go to and have several different cafes to choose from, if and only if you work at Google. Not all of us do, but I think that's something that the rest of us should have too. It would be really nice to go grocery shopping and not have to drive to another city. I actually live right across from Grocery Outlet, and I do love Grocery Outlet, but it's kind of like thrift shopping for groceries. Like, there's some really great stuff, but sometimes I just want mayonnaise, and it's not there. So I am running for Sunnyvale City Council for District 6. I have served so far for two years upon the Sunnyvale School District, where we have expanded our transportation plan to get kids to school on the school bus. We have expanded after-school care significantly while also prioritizing kids who have- who- whose parents aren't necessarily able to afford that. These are some of the things I have done and some of the things that I look forward to working more with on a- from a city council perspective. Transportation is very important to me. After-school care is very important to me. And bike lanes and sidewalks, and making sure that we have a healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you. So part of our forum, we try to go through questions that represent our pillars. So the first set of questions will come from the housing pillar. Actually, before that, we're going to just do a regular pillar question that encapsulates all. And the question is, "What are the two top challenges Sunnyvale faces, and what will you do about them?" Eileen, please.
So the two challenges, I think, that Sunnyvale faces and everywhere faces in the Bay Area and California and the U.S. in general, but especially in Sunnyvale, is housing. We have- we lack affordable housing. And the other thing I'm going to say is climate policy because the changing climate- it was 106 today in October. And we didn't grow up experiencing that. But in a way, this might be the coldest October we live for the rest of our lives. That is not pleasant to think about, and that is not something that our city is built to withstand. We don't have the infrastructure right now to deal with that. We have- we're going to put more demands on the power grid. We're going to need more shade structures. The way that parks right now are designed, there's not shade in a lot of parks. You can't use them even though they're there on hot days like today. Sorry, I forgot the question. The two most important things.
Two top challenges for Sunnyvale.
Okay, top two challenges. Climate, housing. We need to increase our affordable housing stock. We need to build more housing. And for climate change, there's a lot we can do. I think the most important thing to me is reducing the number of vehicle miles traveled, expanding our active transportation plan, getting bus services, and expanding use of the Silicon Valley Hopper up into Sunnyvale.
Thank you. Jim, please.
There we go. Got the mic going again. Again, I agree totally. Housing is our number-one challenge. You know, the Association of Bay Area Governments has put a big, large number on top of us and has told us, "This is what we've got to build." Now, what we have to remember is the city of Sunnyvale does not build houses. But we have to do things within our city and within our government that makes building houses an accessible thing to do. And we have to be more vigorous in regards to our response. You know, one of the things I like to point out is in the north end of town, on Waddell, we had two motels that were closed. They were empty for well over two years. And neither the county nor the city nor anybody did anything to convert those into housing for our homeless population or low-cost housing for people who cannot afford some of the rents that we have to look at. And there, you know, there's other things that we need to do. The second thing that we've got to be responsible for is the budget. We have to make sure that we can acquire enough revenue to meet all of the fiscal demands that our city is saddled with. And those change on a yearly, daily basis. So the budget and housing.
Thank you. Alyssa, please.
Yeah, thank you. And at the risk of being a bit of a broken record, I also know that housing is the biggest issue facing Sunnyvale and equal to it is addressing the climate crisis. And I want to talk about this in terms of what we've done in the last four years and also what we can do in the next four years. Because what we do right now is going to have a significant impact on how people live in Sunnyvale for decades. Both of these issues are facing unprecedented crisis-level challenges. So when I talk about housing, how, of course, Sunnyvale doesn't actually build the housing directly. However, Sunnyvale has the levers which allow that to be built. Those include development fees. Those include zoning. And those include very seemingly boring policy and work with the state and work with the county. Now, I'll move on to the climate crisis. We know that the biggest impact to climate is emissions and transportation. We also know that housing that is denser has a lower impact on the environment than continuing the sprawl. So we need to look at the root cause and what the city has access to to increase our goals, be more ambitious, and then do things that are actionable.
Thank you. So for the first question for our housing pillar, "Sunnyvale recently awarded nearly $30 million for 600 new affordable housing units." Positive step. However, the city needs to build over 800 units annually to meet its RENA goals. Are these targets achievable? And how can Sunnyvale speed up housing production? Jim, please.
Well, we've got to start out by recognizing it's not the city of Sunnyvale that builds the houses, but we do have a big part in making production of houses achievable. And so we have to find ways that cut tape that allow builders to be able to get into the community and start building the housing that we need. The ability, you know, the city has already zoned a number of properties throughout the city, along the El Camino Real, up north and down south, you know, so that there is land and zoning approved to achieve the numbers of housing that the RENA is putting on our backs. But to make that happen, we have to have two things happen. Number one, you know, we have to see more federal income- federal tax cuts so that builders can achieve getting the money that they need to build them. And number two, you know, we need to find ways within the planning department, within the city, to make it an easier process to achieve.
Thank you. Alyssa, please.
Yeah, thank you. When we think about this question, we really need to think about what is the kind of housing that we're building. We have had no trouble building our share of market-rate and middle-income housing. So when we're talking about meeting our RENA numbers, we need to focus on BMR, which is the hardest kind of housing to build for developers and for our nonprofit partners. And the way that we do that is through the market-rate housing process. We know that inclusionary units is how we get almost all of our numbers. We can't continue to rely on outside organizations to come in and save us there. So that means increasing our ability to have density bonuses to incentivize that inclusionary housing. I also believe that it's good for the community to have people of all income levels living near each other. And of course, there's the issue of fees and other mechanisms that we can pull. But we don't have a problem getting one kind of housing. And if we don't get serious about figuring out ways to incentivize the affordable housing along with market rate, then we are not going to meet those RENA numbers, and we're going to be in big trouble with Rob Bonta come the next housing element time. So when I'm looking at housing production with the specific goal of meeting the RENA numbers, I look at one kind of housing in particular.
Thank you. Eileen.
Thank you so much. So I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind when we're talking about housing is density and being able to- and this is top of mind for me as someone who lives in District 6, but having density that is also high enough to support retail. Right now, at our Village Centers, and I realize this is a question that's going to come up very soon, but right now, at the Village Centers on Duane and Lake Haven, the density is 18 homes per acre, which isn't enough to support retail and which isn't going to bring us significantly closer to fulfilling our housing obligation. If we are able to upzone those, and I realize there are barriers in the way because of the Assembly Bill that passed recently about changing the density after a certain time, but that's something that we need to do for future Village Centers to make sure that we have- we are able to support housing so that we don't have more and more and more housing in food deserts. Because it- if we are a city that is committed to solving the climate crisis, to reducing vehicle miles traveled, then we need to have people who are able to shop where they live, work near where they live, and- and live here safely and affordably. We want to keep people here, and we don't want to drive them away.
Thank you. So the next question, "What steps will you take to support retail throughout the city, including the proposed Village Centers in North Sunnyvale?" So, Eileen, I'll let you continue.
I think we need to upzone those in North Sunnyvale. Where we- right now, we have- so right now, north of Caltrain tracks, I think we have eight grocery stores, but that counts Costco, which is literally on the tracks. And in District 6 right now, we have two grocery stores. We have Grocery Outlet, and we have a- we have New Yingon Supermarket, which is an Asian grocery store off of Lake Haven. The nice thing about District 6 in particular is that we do have the Moffett Park specific plan that's going to go in soon, hopefully. One hopes after the interest rates drop a little bit more and people start building up there. And there are talks right now. I'm told by Mayor Klein that maybe Walmart will come in because Walmart is one of the developers right now who is willing to build a brand-new building. But what I want to also do is preserve the existing businesses there so that in Moffett Park, we can have space for Giovanni's Pizza. We can have space for the Metro City Kitchen that's currently off Duane. And these are- these are small, family-run and often minority-run businesses that can't afford rent elsewhere. And we need to take steps to preserve their businesses, their livelihoods as much as we can.
Thank you. Alyssa.
Yes, thank you. And this is an issue that is something that I've worked on really tirelessly from the minute I started campaigning for my first term all the way through. Downtown Sunnyvale is the economic heart of the city. And under my leadership during the pandemic, we had some of the lowest vacancy rates in the entire Bay Area. And how we did that was working with the Downtown Business Association and also creating programs that drove people to those local businesses and focused on creating a vibrant environment where people wanted to be. Now, across the city, those considerations are different. But something that we need to first before we really do everything is make sure the retail that exists within the city stays within the city. And that's going to be creating a business-friendly environment. Increasing transportation options all across the city is huge. But also, as we're looking for the new kind of retail, reducing the footprint requirement because we know that people don't want to, you know, come and rent into those big footprint, you know, the Michaels, the Safeway. It's going to be so much easier to tenant those smaller footprint locations. That naturally has lower rent and offers more opportunity. And so the last thing we want to do is build a bunch of vacant buildings, which is what we may be doing right now.
Jim, please.
Well, I think the Moffett Park specific plan is a very wise step in our direction. It addresses a number of problems that we are foreseeing with the business community as well as the housing. We just started 308 units of low-cost housing out in the Moffett Park area. It'll be the first place to be built to house people out there. And what hopefully that will do is start to open the eyes of some of our larger commercial establishments, the Safeways, the Albertson's, the other grocery stores that will be coming up. And it might- oh, my mic didn't go dead. This will give us the opportunity to start drawing those kinds of commercial businesses out there. And jobbedrive gives us the ability to locate a lot of retail in that area that will be able to benefit the housing that's going to go into that area. But we also have to realize that we have to be careful about scaring away retail, scaring away businesses because it's the retail and the business community that provide the larger amount of money that comes into our budget so that we can provide the services that we need to provide for our citizens.
Thank you. So our next question and the last question on the housing is, "From 2009 to 2019, Sunnyvale's median rent jumped over 80% compared to Santa Clara County's, which was 39.4%, and rents have continued to rise. How do you plan to tackle Sunnyvale's soaring rent?"
Yeah, that's an issue that I need to solve for my family kind of right now because the last time we renewed our lease in an apartment building downtown, we're very fortunate to have found a three-bedroom to accommodate my family. That rent increase was 10%. That is the legal limit in the state of California. And when we went to go negotiate that rent, we were told, "Okay, fine. Go find another three-bedroom apartment in this area for less. You're not going to." And that is the case for many families. And my family is very fortunate to have been able to absorb that, not without paying. But the simple answer is supply and demand. The first thing you learn in any economics class. You need to make sure that we have enough housing to have competitive rental costs, which will ultimately drive it down. This is not a complicated equation, and it's the only thing that has been consistently proved to decrease rents in a specific area. It also allows the naturally occurring affordable housing, older apartment buildings, to continue to command lower rent because of the quality of the housing. I almost call it higher-income containment units to go ahead and fight gentrification from going into areas that do support low-income families so that anyone who wants to make Sunnyvale their home, everywhere from somebody who washes dishes to somebody who works in high tech, can call this city home.
Thank you. Jim, please.
Well, in walking the precincts, I've been talking to a lot of people specifically about this process. In fact, the first couple of houses that I went to happened to be rental homes. And they asked me what were my big issues. And of course, I talked a little bit about public safety and the budget. And they said, "Well, you don't have it right. It's housing. They're raising our rents 10% every year, and it's unbelievable." And I was actually sort of chased out the yard by these people. And they weren't the only people that I talked that had the same feeling. A lot of people out there. This microphone just doesn't like me that much. I'm chewing on the end, but it's still going out on me. Rent control is something that has always been on the back of my burner. But quite honestly, after meeting as many people as I've talked to here in this last few months, and what I'm continuing to see is we need to have a discussion about rent control. We need to find a way of taking care of those 10% rate increases that are driving our family, our low-income families out and encouraging, you know, the higher prices and to keep going up and up in our city. And yes, building housing and more housing will help. But that's not the only and final answer to this. So I served on the Housing and Human Services Commission, and I'm making a study-issue request of the issue of closing down the housing increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I think will help potentially bring down rent is the expansion of ADUs. Having people who the state recently passed, somewhat recently, I think it was last year, allowed ADUs to be more broadly built. And I think having- allowing people to have that flexibility, not just for necessarily renters, but also for people who are caught in like the sandwich generation of having to care for maybe aging parents and maybe also having adult children living with them, having extra space there, and also having the flexibility to potentially rent that out. I think that will be one good first step. I want to say that the city of Sunnyvale does currently have rent control in our mobile home parks. And I think that is important. It's been a great help in keeping people able to live in these places, which is- which is a sort of naturally occurring- what do you call it? Affordable- Naturally occurring affordable housing. So up in District 6, it's interesting. It's there's like a bifurcation between, you know, your multimillion-dollar townhomes and also the mobile home parks down the road. But mobile home parks now, you can buy one for 300K. You can't do that anywhere else in the Bay Area. You can't- that's not enough to buy you a house. It's not enough to buy you a townhouse or a condo. I think preserving our mobile home parks is so important to keeping families in the area. And there is a big shift right now in the people who live there. It's not just older folks or people on fixed income, but there's a lot of young families moving in too.
Thank you. And we will start our sustainability pillar. "Currently, the city's ban on new natural gas installations in developments are on hold due to Berkeley's court ruling. Are there other approaches the city can implement to require new developments to be 100% electrical?" Alyssa, please.
Yeah, that was not a great day on council when we needed to go ahead and put a stop to that because that is another huge contributor to greenhouse gases. Ways that we can confront it is similar to the ways that, you know, having wands replaced by drought-resistant landscaping, right? And this is working with the county to increase the incentives for development to have- to go completely to electrical. And specifically, if, you know, the cost of development is really high and we need to wait for that new legislation to go through, is incentivizing existing buildings, existing homes, to go over to electric? And that is a process that Sunnyvale can't do themselves. That's going to take regional cooperation, which there is an appetite for. This is something I've talked to our supervisor about, our state legislatures about. And I'm really excited to see that how we can actually bundle this to make housing more attractive to build in Sunnyvale rather than the higher cost by offsetting that with things like density bonuses and fee reductions, et cetera. And right now, I'm willing to entertain any ideas that we have because I believe that we need to take a multi-pronged approach to building this into a sustainability package, a sustainability guideline for all new development and existing.
Thank you. Eileen.
Thank you. I agree with Alyssa. No, I'm joking. I do agree with Alyssa, though. There is-
There is a limited number of things we can do. That decision really like kneecapped municipalities in the ways that we're able to move away from gas. And that's, that's really unfortunate. So I think the levers that we have now are trying to find incentives, financial incentives. I think working with Silicon Valley Clean Energy, working with other regional partners, that will help a lot. And also, just broadly education, like telling more people that this is a problem and trying to get people to make the switch on their own as they're doing renovations, as they're doing these projects that they might otherwise be doing. The other thing that I also think is really important is making sure that homes are insulated so that we don't need to use as much heat or as much air conditioning and as much electricity. The reason it is reduce, reuse, recycle is because reducing is really that first step that we need to take. So as much as we can do, and this doesn't apply to, you know, gas appliances, but especially for heating, reducing the use of climate control by making sure that we have windows and doors that are able to insulate better. I think that's a good step as well.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I agree with the concept of insulating our homes and making our homes more friendly towards the climate that we have to deal with. But here's where I diverge from my two other people here at the table with me is I support the Berkeley decision. I don't think that we are in a position at this point to be able to afford 100% electric utilities for everything and anything that we do. You know, yes, we are producing power and there are more people that are using solar panels and things like that. And we're developing solar farms in some of the remote areas. But we still don't have enough access to electricity to be able to meet all the demands that we currently have in our communities. I think it's something that we build towards. But I don't think that, you know, right now, today, we have to change to 100% electric, you know, to be able to sustain our environment as well as sustain our families in our communities.
Thank you. Transportation. So the question is, how do you make Sunnyvale more safe for cyclists and pedestrians? Jim, please.
Well, we've started to do this already. If you'll notice, around all the schools in the city, we've developed some barriers that encompass a portion of the roadway so that, you know, we're not having cars or getting too close or in a field of danger to our children and our parents who are there to take care of their children. I think that we can also during, on some roadway systems throughout the city, we can install pillars. You know, one of the major detractions from putting pillars in was having the ability to clean the street on the other side of those pillars. And I really don't think that that is as much a problem as we want to make it out to be. And the other thing that has been successfully used in a number of cities throughout the Bay Area is moving the bike lanes up against the curb and allow parking on the other side of the bike lane. And that keeps, you know, these cars away from running into our bicyclists, both adult and children, and makes the roads a little bit safer. The city of Sunnyvale has done an extremely great job over the years at establishing bike routes. And I think that we do it better than Santa Clara and Mountain View in regards to having safe routes to school and safe routes for our bicyclists to use.
Thank you. Eileen.
So I'm a school board trustee, and my first answer to a lot of questions is education. Education, education, education. You need to teach people how to drive better. I want to say that I, the first day those pillars came out, it was exciting because as a parent who drops off their kid at Lakewood, we had the cars and the bus and also a bunch of cars that were lining up for grocery distribution, all very confused about what to do. And I think it's manageable, but I think we need to talk to people about how those pillars are intended to work and how you're supposed to drive around them. I see a lot of questions on like, on Facebook or other things about how to bike that safely. Like you're, it's not completely intuitive how you're supposed to do that. One of the things that Mayor Klein and VTA have been exploring is the creation of an East Channel Trail that will go from north to south. And I think that would be amazing, having, they're calling it a potential bike superhighway to be able to get, and a lot of people in Sunnyvale live on the south side of town and end up going to work on the north side of town. So to be able to have that, that path be safer for people to get that commute, that would be, that would, that would be game-changing. I also am a huge proponent of the city investing in the shuttle that we talk about a lot. But it's going to be a shuttle that's going to, that some of our neighbors already have. So potentially linking Santa Clara and Cupertino and Sunnyvale and getting all the way to the electric Caltrain. I think that's going to be fantastic, too.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. The way we make things safer is to build the infrastructure to do this. That, of course, includes bike lanes and looking at not just our cities, but also the international community that has made their roads a lot safer using different design techniques specifically. And the way that I've worked on getting more bike lanes, too, is building the political will to actually build these out. And part of that is working with residents who do live on these streets to help make sure that they have buy-in so there's not a political barrier to the city continuing to build these bike lanes. And then I want to talk about pedestrians specifically. We had a really hot day today. And it is really hard for people, even on much more mild days, to walk if there aren't shade trees along our roads. There are countless benefits to having more trees in our community. But that also helps people make it feasible to use our sidewalks and be pedestrians. Another thing is building things that people want to go to within walking distance and biking distance. I want to call out the East Channel as well. Having contiguous bike lanes and being able to get directly to your destination makes a big difference in whether you decide to take your car or whether you decide to ride your bike. And so, we're, we need to go ahead and engage our other cities as well to have more contiguous bike lanes.
Thank you. The next question in transportation. Residents have expressed concerns about the difficulty children living in North Sunnyvale face using public transportation to get to schools. What steps would you take to make it easier for these students to get to school? Eileen.
Well, personally, I would build a school up there. And that is something that we, as the, as the Sunnyvale School Board are looking to do for, for the upcoming Moffett Park project. We're looking to build a K-8 school up there, but that's in the future. And I just want to say this at every opportunity that I can, that we should also have a high school in North Sunnyvale. As it exists, though, the children from my complex, you have to take two buses. You have to take two buses to get down and then transfer on the corner of Fair Oaks and Dwayne, which, by the way, is where the old high school used to be. So you get to wait at the bus stop where the high school you should have been going is in order to take another bus. And VTA has made that route faster. You can go directly from there to the high school now instead of swinging through downtown. And that's a big improvement. But it's not ideal. And it's not something that we ask children elsewhere to do. And it's something that is very difficult at night and for kids who have to go to school early or come home late to go with hockey sticks and band gear and all that. It is not insurmountable. I think that having the shuttle is going to help that a lot, having the ability to have that more direct. But right now, it is and it continues to be a problem.
Thank you. Jim, please.
Well, we've talked about this problem fairly succinctly. And it is terrible. It's, I am, my heart breaks when I hear about the kids from the north in the city of Sunnyvale having to get on bus or buses to get to Fremont High School. It takes them 45 minutes to an hour to get from, you know, Lakewood Village down to the high school in Fremont and Sunnyvale, Saratoga. That's way too long. But I do have to say thank you to VTA for making available special busing lines that allow our kids to get there in a fairly timely manner. But still, we have to find ways, you know, to address those problems, you know, where a child misses that last bus and mom and dad have already gone to work. How do we get them there? I have been working with an organization called Podcar City for a number of years. It was introduced to me back in 2011. And it's an above-ground electric vehicle system which gets you from one place to another so you could get on a podcar in Lakewood Village and it would not stop until it gets to you to Fremont High School. And I think that this is a concept that we might need to take under consideration as a rather remarkable way of changing the way we're getting kids from place to place in the north.
Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I live right on the edge of District 2 across from District 5. Really, there is very little difference if you're looking specifically on how a kid gets to school. And my oldest daughter just graduated high school. She went to Fremont High School. And she also took the bus there from her sophomore year on. And so I can tell you some personal experiences of why that was so difficult. And it's way more difficult the more north you get. Those headways and the amount of time between buses makes it really difficult to time that with your school schedule. And like was mentioned, if you miss that bus, you may be missing your class. I also want to give a huge thanks to the entire community. So many different organizations and interests, all the way from the school districts to our senior community, came out in support of the Via Shuttles. And that is something that we had below the line until those community groups came in and demanded we make that our number-one priority. And so, when I'm thinking about making it easier for students to get there, we need to engage as many people in that community as possible to come up with the routes and the frequency of that shuttle and then look to use that as evidence to VTA. There is demand for more public transportation north to south because you have an interesting push and pull. You need the demand to justify the new routes. And so, we can continue to pull on many levers in that regard.
Thank you. And the next question. On a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being the highest, how would you rank public transportation in Sunnyvale? If you don't rank it high, what would you do to improve it? Jim, please.
Okay, I ranked it number 5. And it's not going to get much better than 5 because of the fact the roadways that we have in the city of Sunnyvale can't be changed at this point. Fair Oaks can't be widened any further than it is. Wolf Road is as wide as it's going to be able to get. Matilda is as wide as it can be. The north-south or the east-west, we've got Central Expressway, God bless America. And, but we don't have a lot of opportunity to change the roadway system. And, you know, so producing shuttles that put more vehicles on the road, which cause more congestion, may not necessarily be the answer to what we want to do. You know, I spoke shortly about the podcars that I talked about earlier in my career. And what they are is they are an above-ground rail system that is run by electricity that is, once you get onto the podcar, it takes you directly to your destination. And we can build those at a miniscule amount of the price of building roadways or building train tracks or a variety of other things. So I'm thinking that this is something that the city should again take under consideration and start looking at. Because our city is not getting any smaller than it currently is.
Thank you. Let's see. Eileen.
My friend who is watching online recently came to my house and the bus, I think, was 45 minutes late. Once she actually got on the bus from downtown, she made it to my house in 10 minutes. But waiting for the bus was a little bit of an extra step. So I think we can do better. I'm going to say that I don't think our roadways need to be expanded, but we need to ask for more frequent buses. And I think we need some more stops. I think it's very important that, for example, we have a stop closer to the Sunnyvale Senior Center. Right now, the closest one is about a mile away. Similarly, this closest stop to the library is about a mile away. And especially for the people who need those services, for seniors getting to the senior center, that's, that's a long distance to travel. That's a long distance to walk, especially on a hot day like today. And especially if you're a senior or if you have other disabilities. My husband is visually impaired. It's very difficult for him to make that sort of walk in unfamiliar environments. But I want to say that I do live on the light rail and I actually like the light rail a lot. And that gets me to the farmer's market, but unfortunately, not the Sunnyvale farmer's market. I can get to the Mountain View farmer's market very easily. So I would actually rate the light rail at a 7 and then the VTA maybe lower than that at a 3. And I guess we average out at a 5.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I would give a different answer depending on where you are in the city. Because there is a systemic issue that has happened for decades and decades and decades where we have inequities built into city planning. So communities of color, lower-income communities have been deprioritized in terms of how we've planned our city and public transportation systems very particularly. And so downtown, I'll speak because I'm running for a District 2 seat, we have a good 8. We have Caltrain. We have, you know, a bus stop that has a lot of different buses coming in between. And it's fairly easy, as easy as it can get in the city of Sunnyvale, to get where you want to go. However, we need to utilize every tool in our toolbox. Right now, the Via Shuttle is the most viable option. And I really want to focus, what is the viable options that we can take action on right now? We also, before there was a lot of cuts to state programs, there was state money and federal money toward focusing on those communities that have been disadvantaged by, you know, inequitable city planning. So when we're focusing our energy, I believe that taking north to south and having it go through the whole city is something that I want to do, especially focusing on making sure those who don't have easy access to bus stops. And if you're relying on a bus, you're also relying on walking. So we want to consider it holistically.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our equity pillar. Recently, Governor Newsom has ordered cities throughout California to clean up encampments within their borders. How do you think city leaders should respond to the encampments in Sunnyvale? Eileen.
So I come at this from a school board perspective. And within the school board, any kid that comes through a school's doors is our kid. We're going to give them food. We're going to give them an education. We're going to take care of them after school because that's our kid. It doesn't matter if they're homeless or not. Up to, I think it's about 21% of homeless unhoused people now are families. They have a family. It's not just one person often. It's a person and his or her small children. And I think there's a necessity to look at this with humanity, that we are, that we need to take care of these families and try to take care of them as much as possible. It's, I want to take that moral imperative to the city council, that these are our residents, that these are people who live within the bounds of our city and that we need to take care of them. And on that note, I want to say that tomorrow, we're going to be painting the North County Shelter. Please contact me. We're going to be painting that before they move some families in. We're hoping to move some families in next week. So please reach out to me. My email address is eileen.t.l-e@gmail.com. Again, that's eileen.t.l-e@gmail.com. We're looking for volunteers to paint.
Thank you. Let's see. Alyssa, please.
The first principle in addressing this issue of working with encampments as a city is with compassion, putting compassion first. And I also want to say, we should be ashamed as a city if every single time somebody dies on our streets because there has not been enough resources guiding them to any kind of resource to live inadequately. And it's very much the city's business to do this. The kind of work that the city is considering right now is sanctioned encampments, although that's not going to solve the whole problem. It will help people get into safer environments where they can more easily access services and also sanitation resources. Another wonderful thing that we've recently done is contract with the organization, We Hope, which includes a number of hotel space for those who do, who are chronically unsheltered, homeless folks who live in encampments, to more comfortably transition into a sheltered environment. And then the next most important way is to make sure to leverage people who are trusted to people who are traumatized, who have a lot of distrust in institutions, period, and feel that they are in the safest environment possible. So when we're looking at cleaning up encampments or relocating them, having trusted messengers is going to be key to doing that successfully.
Thank you. Jim, please.
Well, the city of Sunnyvale really needs to be ashamed. The city of Mountain View has a marvelous safe parking program. They have tiny home projects. They have hotel projects. The city of Santa Clara has similar programs. The city of San Jose has tiny home programs and safe parking all over. We don't have any. There's nothing under consideration. Earlier, a couple of years ago, we had a safe parking place at a church in South Sunnyvale. And when the city became aware of it, they closed it. And we haven't done anything more in regards to taking care of the problems that the unhoused face since then. You know, I mentioned earlier about the hotels or the motels that were on Widdell that were there for years. And the city could have used eminent domain and taken over those properties and adjusted things so that we could have some housing there. We have a great big gigantic property in downtown Sunnyvale where the Orchard Supply Hardware used to be, which is zoned for high-density living. We could use eminent domain to take that property over and start construction and start building, you know, homes for the people that need it. Going and clearing encampments is not the answer to the homeless problem. Finding places where these people can go, either by building the tiny homes, having safe parking, or using eminent domain to get properties to take care of our people, that's the way we need to do it.
Thank you. Next question. Do you think the city should implement a safe parking program? Why or why not? Alyssa, please.
Yes, absolutely. There are challenges to doing that that we need to overcome, but the answer is yes, we should. This is good for the residents and this is good for the people who live in RVs because currently there's parking in neighborhoods because this is the safest place to park. And honestly, that's where they can go. Having a safe parking program solves some of the issue, but also considering where that's going to go, both in terms of size and available land. So the city council has, does have safe parking on the docket as a study issue that has been consistently ranked very highly. And our very talented city staff is working very hard to find that land to do it. There is no way that we're going to be able to build a facility large enough to accommodate the population that currently lives in RVs, but also looking at people who live in their cars, which is a much less visible form of homelessness. So overall, working to do very targeted outreach to these communities is going to be really important, even though it's really challenging. But we can reach them through organizations like Sunnyvale Community Services and through our contract with We Hope. But yes, we should absolutely build safe parking. We can also engage our faith communities who do have parking lots. And they have often been very willing and able, if we're able to provide some resources, to make that something that's feasible for them to put their compassion toward.
Thank you. Eileen.
Yes, I agree with that. I do support the safe parking program. I often go to Mountain View and my favorite bakery is on Independence and it is full of RVs. It's just parked up and down. As much space as they are able to give them is taken for the most part. And these RVs, some of them have been there a while. I saw some people are setting up lawns, like people live here. They're putting out like some astroturf and putting on like a slide and putting out kids' furniture, kids' toys. And how amazing to be able to have that kind of stability in a child's life, to be able to say, yeah, I have a place to go home to. I have a home. I can be somewhere. I know where I'm going after school. This is something that we need to be working with our regional partners on before we choose a space. I hope that we can talk to the school district about it so we know who's coming, where we can put these kids so that we have room, we have the teachers, we have the space in the classrooms for them. But we can work together and we can make this happen. I am really excited that this is moving forward or potentially moving forward with a study issue. And I think it's just one step that we can take, but it's a step that we have to take.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I think I talked about it in the last question a little bit. Safe parking is a very viable option. I have talked to several pastors at different churches throughout different areas of the city of Sunnyvale who said that they would be willing to start a safe parking program in their parking lots. The city of Mountain View has all of the information and tools necessary to implement safe parking. All we have to do is go over there and say, hey, can you give us your procedures that you use for safe parking? And we'd be 10 steps ahead of where we are today rather than just having a study session to, you know, to discuss it. We'd be actually doing something about it. There are areas in the downtown that were used, used to be heavily used for parking, for Caltrain, that aren't being used anymore, that could be used for safe parking. There are other areas in the city that we could also be looking at to put tiny homes in, something that also takes care of another aspect of the housing problem. You know, so yes, safe parking is a very viable option. I hope that the city moves forward in doing something about it rather than just talking about it.
Thank you. Next question. City council will be considering creating a guaranteed basic income program. What do you think are the benefits and deficits of this program? And do you think city funds should be allocated to support a guaranteed basic income program? Eileen.
I do. I think that there is a lot of research with, that have been done by other people where I think the people who will be receiving the money are the people who understand best what they need money for. Like, we can give people this money and it's up to them whether this should be put towards rent or towards food or to other things that they need. So I'm just reading the question again. Benefits and deficits are the problem. And do you think the city funds? Yes, I do think we should allocate the funds. This is something that, when research has been done on it, it's been shown that it, the benefits outweigh the cost, that the benefits that you see from people being able to put this money into their needs, it prevents homelessness. It prevents them from needing other things in the future. And it's an investment, like it really is an investment into people's well-being that I think we need to pursue.
Jim, please.
Well, I'm taking the opposite side of this coin because I absolutely do not and will not support giving money to people. You know, that is not the function of the government of the city of Sunnyvale. Our purpose is to provide for the needs of those that the people themselves cannot fulfill. That means that we build streets, we build sewer systems, we build schools, we build parks. But to just give people money, you know, is something that we have proven time and time again over history as being a very bad idea. And we look back to the 1930s and 1940s, you know, we look at the situations in Chicago, New York City, Philadelphia, where money has been given to people. And what people have used that money for is not necessarily to pay the rent, not necessarily to buy groceries, but to use it for ways that it was never intended to be used, to buy alcohol, to, you know, make bets on wagers and, you know, to buy drugs. And I've seen that a lot where people have been given money. You know, they use it in ways that are not beneficial to either them or their families. And so I am not a supporter of basic income.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I was one of the original cosponsors of the city engaging in a study issue to look at, you know, some kind of basic income program. And it just is factual that this has overwhelming benefits from a community. If you look at any reputable study, outliers are not part of a statistic. We know that if we're serious about homelessness, we need to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. This is a very tangible way to do that. If you're asking, should we spend city funds? There is no way that our city budget will go ahead and support one of these programs long-term without making serious cuts to essential services. However, if we engage in this, we need to make sure that we have money coming either from the state or the federal government. And Sunnyvale Community Services, where we're sitting right now, has very generously offered to administer this program. So as far as using city resources go, we can study the impacts of this, but people, poor people are not criminals. Poor people are not criminals. Even $500 a month is the difference between paying rent or not, the difference between eating or not. And that has a benefit on our entire system beyond the city of Sunnyvale, but will specifically help people who need it the most and for whom just a little help prevents disaster and becoming a larger issue.
Thank you. Our last question in the equity space. What can the city do to prevent homelessness? Jim, please.
Well, there are a number of things that I proposed on the Housing Human Services Commission. I was the one that started the study issue that increased the percentage of low-cost or below-cost housing from 15% to 20%. I think that's a big start. The other thing that we were doing was we were allowing developers to come in and say that they weren't going to build any low-cost housing. And then we would require them to make a payment to the city. And it was a miniscule amount of money. It costs anywhere between $900,000 to $1 million per unit, you know, to build in the city now. And we were asking, you know, developers to pay several thousand dollars. So, you know, one of my study issues was to increase that amount of money to an equitable amount so that we would have the money that we need as a city to be able to procure land and to offer help to the development of low-cost and moderate-cost housing.
Alyssa.
Yes, thank you. I'll give you the solution to ending homelessness. Make sure they have a home. Give people homes. Make sure that they're there. It is that easy and that difficult to tackle that kind of problem, as we know. However, that takes time. So how do we prevent homelessness in the current situation? We just mentioned a basic income program. That's proven time and time again through reputable studies to make a significant difference in how many people become homeless in a community. We also need to make, in order to prevent people from becoming homeless, specifically targeting families and those with disabilities to make sure they're connected to the benefits they need, which doesn't necessarily cost a whole lot of city dollars. It's working with existing partnerships that we have with Sunnyvale Community Services and We Hope to bridge some of that gap. Because the reason why people become homeless is because they cannot afford their rent or cannot afford to continue to support themselves while remaining housed. That's just, that's just the facts. And if we want to get serious about that, we need to get serious about working with partners to build the housing, to do outreach to those who are right at the cusp. We can, the schools are actually a really good avenue to do that because we do collect some level of income data there. However, we're not going to be able to reach everyone, but we need to do everything we can to reach those that we do have access to.
Thank you. Eileen?
I'm going to jump off that school point. So my neighborhood school is Lakewood Tech EQ. And one of the things that the principal there is doing that I really love and really admire is that she's transforming that school into a community school. And what that means is that there is, in conjunction with the Santa Clara County Board of Education and with a whole lot of grant funding, we are creating a space where there is no wrong door, where a kid can come in because they're feeling upset and a social worker can ask them, hey, why are you upset? And the kid can say, my dad lost his job. And we will have resources available for that kid, for that family, to be able to find unemployment assistance, to find other resources, to find food assistance if they need that. I love that model. I think that's something that can be expanded upon, that we need to be able to point people in the direction of where they can find help. I heard a statistic recently from my friend who's running for the County Board of Supervisors that for every person that is housed in Santa Clara County, two people become unhoused. And by the time that happens, you think of like a stack of Swiss cheese and there are holes and there are holes, but there should be another layer under it to catch it if something falls through. And our Swiss cheese model is too holy. There are too many holes. There are too many people falling through. We need to do what we can to, I don't know, switch to cheddar, plug the holes, to make sure that people don't slip.
Wow, that's the end of those questions. Thank you all. This was really good. This is, Jim was the first. At least I thought, yeah. Yeah, so this was very good. This is part of what we do at Livable Sunnyvale, is try to engage and ask thoughtful questions surrounding our pillars to help the community make good choices and get to know our community. So thank you all. These are the easy ones, so you can take a breath. Or at least the fun ones. And I'm tempted, but I don't think I will. But I was going to poke on my audience, but I might. So, the first question. What, 30 seconds? Yes. When was the last time you used public transportation? Eileen?
I took the Caltrain, the electric Caltrain, to San Francisco. It was fantastic. My son really loves trains and I took my whole family and we went on this like really long route. And in retrospect, it maybe was too long for a day trip with like a little baby. And it maybe went a little bit too long, but it was really fun and I really loved that Caltrain, that new electric Caltrain.
Thank you. Alyssa?
About four days ago. I often watch my nephew because my sister is a nursing student and also works part-time. So he does love trains. He is four years old. And so whenever I watch him, I promise Auntie Alyssa is going to take you on the Caltrain, which I live about three blocks from, and we go down to Mountain View and we come back. So that is, he has a love of public transportation that goes beyond just looking at the big trains. So want to build that habit in. But yeah, about four days ago and probably in another four days.
Thank you. Jim?
Actually, it was today. It's sort of an amazing thing. I got up early this morning. I was watching the news and found out that the ferry system from Alameda to San Francisco and back and there are other areas were free to ride. So I hurried up, got dressed, got in the car, drove to Alameda, and I took the ferry across from Alameda to San Francisco and back a couple of times. It was wonderful. I loved it.
Thank you. Next question. What was your first paid job? Alyssa?
Working the snack shack at my brother's Little League, the Astros. And I was in charge of a lot of nachos and Big League chew gum. But it was a really fun experience. I got to meet a lot of different people, became friends with the coaches, snuck some people. people a little extra candy if they didn't have the money to do it, which was really unfortunate, even though we were in an off-lone area. But it was a lot of fun.
You, Eileen?
Oh man, am I dating myself. I was in high school and I was a poll worker for the Bush-Gore election. Oh, yeah. So that was really interesting because I've never done a paid job before, but I got instructions. They told me what to do. You can't campaign within 20, I don't remember how much it is. And there was a woman who was wearing, I think it was a Gore shirt, and he had to turn it inside out, and I got to tell her to do that. And beyond that, it was pretty, it was pretty unremarkable, except for the results.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I grew up on a farm, so there were a lot of jobs that I had that weren't necessarily paid for with money, but my dad did feed me. Unfortunately, my junior year of high school, my dad suffered a heart attack. And I was an emancipated minor for my senior year of high school. And I did have to have a paid job, and so I did laundry at the local hospital.
Thank you. Crystal Wickham. What was your first paid job?
I taught gymnastics at a community school. And I was a gymnast myself, and so it was an awesome first job.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'll pick on somebody else, so get scared. Next question. Libraries are for culture and companionship, per the book Palaces for the People. Where do you stand on the library bond? Jim?
I'm against the library bond. I think that we could better spend our money at adding on to our current library, which is a good structure, improving what needs to be improved, and save over $290 million.
Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very excited about the library bond. We had some really difficult polling that surprised people, where the real estate transfer tax polled better than the library bond. So what I did is I went to the business community and said, hey, if we don't do that tax, would you be willing to put the money that you would spend attacking the city into supporting the library bond? Everyone loves libraries. You're going to look good. The city has a better chance of passing it. And they said, yes, please. Please don't put that tax on the ballot. And I, you know, they came to counsel with that offer, and they're currently doing that.
Eileen?
I do support the library bond. I think the existing building has, it's kind of ship of theseist itself, where you don't actually, it's been band-aided so many times, it really just needs to be replaced. We, I really love the library. I go there with my baby and we use the, I don't remember what it's called, the Early Learning Center, and that's just so much fun. And I also get books there for my older child. He reads on a Kindle now. And he gets electronic books. And the way that we use libraries has changed so much. We don't, we need a space that reflects that.
Thank you. Next one. Prop five would reduce the approved threshold for housing and public infrastructure bonds to 55%. Do you support this? Eileen?
Yes, I do support this. I think this is one of those, I think it is, I think it's necessary. That's all I got.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yes, those are traditionally pretty hard to pass in a lot of municipalities, especially when there's a lot of opposition to housing. And also, regional bonds are even harder to push when you have a two-thirds threshold. So a lot of them never go through. So I'm huge in support. I really hope that we can bring back the regional bond measure that we had to pass up this year, especially if this passes. It changes the whole equation about what cities and regions are able to do to fund more, especially affordable housing.
So my little plug, at the end of this forum, we'll have a short business meeting and we'll have a short presentation on Prop Five. And Corey Wallbeck from SV at Home is Action Fund is going to talk to us about that, and we're going to have a vote to endorse. So next question. What book or movie has impacted you and why? Alyssa?
Yeah, when I was in high school, at Homestead High School, Go Mustangs, we read this book in my senior year literature class called Sophie's World. And it was a book about philosophy written in the style of a novel and translated from Norwegian. Within a year of graduating high school, I had my first daughter, and her name is Sophie. And so that impacted my life in a very significant way. And the philosophy principles that I learned there have impacted how I think about the world around me ever since.
Thank you. Eileen?
I love Star Wars. It's not good, it's not good. It just isn't. And I need to admit that every time I say I love Star Wars, I love Star Wars. It's so fun, and it's just like my brain's candy. And the thing about Star Wars that I love is that the original trilogy is about the Vietnam War. It just is. The sequel trilogy is about, it's about the 9/11 security state. It just is. And then the sequel trilogy is about how, in the face of complacency, neo-fascism is allowed to rise. And that is like a really powerful message that's cloaked in laser swords.
Jim, please.
Well, I thought I decided on what I like to read, and my mind's changed. I like Star Wars too. But no, I'm a Grisham fan. I love, I love his novels in regards to, you know, the intrigue of the world.
Thank you. Next question. If you had 25 hours in your day, where would you spend the extra hour? Jim?
Oh, I'd spend that extra hour in my backyard with my puppy dogs and my newspaper and music.
Thank you. Eileen?
I would probably spend it asleep, honestly. I have, he's going to be one tomorrow. I have an almost one-year-old who is still trying to figure out how to sleep. But I also have so many things on my plate, and I feel like I should spend that hour at Lakewood's Garden pulling weeds because I have a bunch of plants that need to go in soon for the pollinator grant that we're, pollinator plant grant that we're getting, and I just have a lot of weeds to pull.
Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. I think about the old adage, you don't regret spending time with your family when you're about to die, but you always regret not spending more time with your family. And so I have a two-month-old and a 17-year-old. And unfortunately, with work and life gets busy, I want to spend as much time as I can with them and doing something fun and not just the everyday stuff. So being able to build those hours in, every hour counts.
On somebody. Marie Bernard. Where would you spend your extra hour?
Thanks. I have to echo what Alyssa said because I do think that I would want to spend it with my loved ones.
Thank you. So the next question. If you had to delete all but three apps on your phone, which would you keep? Eileen?
Okay, so I have an app that keeps my baby, my Baby Monder app, and it also makes his crib bounce because I spurred on a really silly crib that bounces my baby to sleep for me. So I'd keep that one. I think the other one that I would keep is Gmail because otherwise I don't know how I would communicate with people, and that would be tragic. And then probably WhatsApp because that's the other thing I use to communicate with people.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I'd, what apps would I keep on my phone? My Chrome, I have to have that or it couldn't function. I'd have to have my Yahoo account. And I do text messaging. I don't know if that's an app or not.
Thank you. Alyssa?
She had to look at her phone, sorry.
I did. Is there the option to delete all of them? I can get very, because you can get so wrapped up in this, and some part of me just wants to say, you know what? Maybe life would be easier if I just didn't have one. I would say Gmail, Audible, that's how I get a lot of my reading done, and Yelp. That helps me decide where I'm going to go, and I rely on others for that.
Thank you. Let's see. A mentor you had in the political space? Alyssa?
Lorena Gonzalez, who is now head of the California Labor Federation. When I first became a council member or was even considering it, I was fortunate enough to have to go to her for advice as a Latina in politics and as somebody who has done some real cool stuff unapologetically. And she has given me a wealth of advice. She's somebody I text when I'm frustrated. She's somebody I send my successes to. And, you know, I don't know if I would be the same elected official without her.
Jim?
Jerry Brown is a very close friend of mine. And he has really been a tremendous advocate, and I don't know what I'd do without him. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen?
Melinda Hamilton. I worked with her on the Sunnyvale Education Foundation, and she is, she was the first council member to have, to have had a child while on council. And the way that she's able to navigate complex situations with like humor and grace, and I appreciate that so much.
Thank you. Well, that was fun. We'll now end with our closing statements. So Jim, your first, please.
Well, I think what I'd like to emphasize is the fact that I'm going to be a keen eye on your budget, to make sure that your tax dollars are spent in the very best, formidable way that they can. The other thing that I promise all of my District Two families is that when elected, I am going to have meetings in the district every month, at some different location. And it's not for me to talk. I want to be there to hear what you have to say, and then be able to take my governmental experience, go back to our city, and make things happen that are best for all of our community.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I serve on an extremely functional council, where we work really well together, have our disagreements, but we come together afterwards. And having a functional council where people are on the same wavelength is really critical to the smooth running. So if you're looking for somebody who can work with others, I'm your candidate. I'm somebody who grew up in Sunnyvale, and I'm also raising my family here. And I made a lot of sacrifices to be able to do that. And so when I'm thinking about decisions, I think about what is going to impact those, not only right now, but far down the line, where I may not even be able to receive, like see the results of my policy. And I am confident that I will continue to be the council member you've come to expect. You can tune into any meeting we've had over the last four years, and I'm proud of my work there. And if you're looking to know who I am as a council member, I ask you to go look at that for myself and for any candidate, including on the school board.
Thank you. Eileen?
I updated my Instagram bio recently, and it says, Mom, School Board Trustee, activist, because those, that's how I think of myself. First, I'm a mom. I have two kids. If I'm elected, I'll be the only person with school-aged child or, you know, grade-school-age children on the school board. I also have a very young child who's going to turn one tomorrow. I'm so excited. And this is an important perspective, having someone who's in the trenches, having someone who is aware of how hard it is to raise a family here. It is, I bring that lens, and it's an important one. I think that we need that perspective. It's hard to bring that perspective because you're so busy. It's really hard being a mom. And I also think that District Six has been historically underrepresented for so long that we really need an, not just an advocate, but an activist on that, on the city council, someone who's going to push for change that we need.
Well, thank you all. That concludes our candidate forum. I really appreciate your time and your coming. We invited all the council, all the candidates. For various reasons, not all could be here, so this is what we have. But everybody was invited, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to the city. Thank you. Oh, yikes. Okay. So we just have a little bit of, a little bit of business to do. First off, next week, we're having another candidate forum here, and that is on the school board. Fremont Union High School District has gone to districts. So we will have some of those candidates come and share their views. Our questions will try to center around our pillar, but with that being said, they'll be a little bit different for education purposes. That's next week, Wednesday, here at 6:30, also in hybrid. Our November meeting, we're going to have a Safe Park Forum because we feel that's, we've done it before, but we're going to do it again and see what the latest is on that and how we move forward with that. So we have two things that we are voting on tonight and presentations. So the first one will be on Measure Y, and Peggy Shin-Brooster is going to present a short presentation on that.
Hello, everybody. I am on the Support Sunnyvale Schools team, and I am here to talk about Measure Y. It is, there is a slides, there's a couple of slides, but I can talk without if they don't come up on time. It's a short talk. It's a parcel tax renewal. We've been paying this tax $59 per parcel, and that's been since 2011. We're asking for a renewal right now. It generates, I think I did, yeah. And I'm happy to send it out to the membership later as well. It generates 1.1 million per year, and it helps us to maintain the programs that we already have in Sunnyvale School Districts. It pays for nine teachers every year. There is a senior and a disabled person exemption. And it's really critical that we continue this funding. And it requires a two-thirds vote, so I do encourage everybody to vote yes if you need, well, actually, we're asking for your endorsement here. I'm happy to answer any questions. There is an informational video as well. We're asking to renew an existing parcel tax. So we have some slides up. It's talking about the things that I just said. You can go to the next slide, has the ballot language. Again, I want to emphasize that there's a two-thirds vote required, and that there is great community oversight for the parcel tax as well as the bond measures that we pass for the Sunnyvale School District. The next slide shows that in the county, those of, those districts that do have a parcel tax, ours is the least of all of them. And at this point, the board decided that we do not want to ask for more money. We want to maintain, just to make sure that we can continue providing these programs. And the last slide is just simply asking for that support from the community. Happy to take any questions or anything?
I don't think, I don't see any questions. I can't really see online. Are there any questions? Oh, Crystal has a question.
I see a sign back here that I don't have in my sign garden. How can those online get a sign?
You may go to supportsunnyvilleschools.org, and you can request one there. You can also email me directly, peggyshinbrooster@gmail.com. There are very few signs available, so I ask if you have a highly visible corner, please take one. And I do have a ton of buttons. We actually got stickers, not real buttons, not like new buttons, because we want to reuse. So we have circles, perfectly sized circle stickers to place over existing buttons so that we can reuse buttons. I have stacks, hundreds of those. Please take those and wear them around town. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I also add that on supportsunnyvilleschools.org is a great place to register your individual support as an endorser, as well as give a donation. support as an endorser, as well as give a donation. We are short on funds. There's a lot on the, you know, on the ballot, as we know, but it's very important that we just generate a little more to at least break even, and we'd like to do a little bit more promotion as well. So, please, you know, $10 makes a big difference. Thank you.
Can someone put that in the chat? It's sunnyvale schools, support sunnyvilleschools.org, and there's more information, and then a way to donate also. And so, I make a motion that Livable Sunnyvale would endorse Measure Y. Is there a second? Second from Jim? And all in favor? I guess just raise your hand in the room and on Zoom, and we will verify that people can vote or voting. And I see Chuck is diligently doing that, so thank you. Okay. I think Chuck got that. You got that, Chuck? Yep. So, that motion passes. And then, the next one is Prop 5. So, we have Corey Wallback here. Corey, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Nailed it. Thank you very much.
And?
Let me make sure my video is working.
Yes, and can Corey share his screen, please?
Absolutely. Let me say, first off, thank you very much for the forum. It was great to listen to and hear from the candidates. I just want to, as I'm getting my screen share up, want to say that I am excited to see how the discourse around housing has changed so much over the last decade or so. It's great to see people arguing about how we're going to build more affordable housing and protect residents, rather than whether it's worth doing in the first place. So, with that said, I know that Livable Sunnyvale understands the housing crisis, so I'm going to skip all of the slides explaining why this housing crisis is important, and how dire the housing crisis is in our area, especially those in that forum, I think. So, I'm not going to waste your time on that. Just for those who want a refresher or haven't been following Prop 5, we know that in order to pass a housing or an infrastructure bond, that could be for, for schools, sorry, for anything, it could be for, sorry, for fire stations, for roads, for transportation, climate resilience, et cetera, and I believe libraries as well, you need a two-thirds vote in California. And that's, you know, a higher vote threshold than even passing something through our broken Senate at the national. We know that 60 votes makes things really hard to pass in the Senate. 66.666% is even worse. Here is an example, or just some examples of measures that have been passed by the voters, but couldn't be passed into law because of the threshold that we right now have, the requirement of two-thirds. So, like in 2018, San Jose tried to pass a housing bond, got 64% of vote, and failed because of the current two-thirds requirement threshold. Santa Cruz, just last year, got 66% of the vote, but not 66.66666, et cetera. And so, they failed with their fire district bond. So, what Prop 5 does is it lowers the voter threshold for housing and infrastructure bonds from two-thirds to 55%. So, it's still a supermajority, but it is a little bit more democratic, actually, a lot more democratic than the two-thirds. We know that 55%, you know, would have allowed all of these measures to pass in the last few years, and the two-thirds requirement is just incredibly undemocratic. And when local communities decide, you know what? We want, as a community, to invest in our affordable housing, infrastructure, and 55 or more percent of our community agrees, we should be able to do that. So, that's what Prop 5 is about. There's a big coalition. This is a sampling of some of the supporters. It's a pretty broad coalition, which is really great to see. I will mention that polling shows it looks very close, definitely within the margin of error. Some show more support, some, I've seen a sampling that shows more support than no, some that shows more no's than yes, but like definitely within that margin of error, or to borrow a phrase that I've heard from others, the margin of effort. Whether Prop 5 passes or not really is up to us and our counterparts across the state. If we don't work really hard, it's going to fail. And if we work really hard, it can definitely pass. And I should have, I'm sorry, prefaced this by saying, I work at Silicon Valley Home, and SV at Home and SV at Home Action Fund, our affiliated 501(c)(4), is, you know, really enthusiastic about, about Prop 5. We're supporting efforts on the field campaign for Prop 5 in Santa Clara County, which is really being led by our friends at Work Partnerships, and they're affiliated 501(c)(4) Silicon Valley Rising Action. So, they're really leading the local field effort, and we're trying to help, you know, draw up more support among activist organizations, community-based organizations across, across the county, so we can get more people out there fundraising and knocking on doors and support. I've probably gone over the time that Angela allotted to me, so I'm going to stop there.
Thank you, Corey. So, we heard from our candidate forum, all three candidates are in favor of Prop 5, so I'm making a motion that Livable Sunnyvale endorse Prop 5. I see a second from Agnes. All in favor? And if you raise your hand on the screen, or I see Sue Saroni put a heart and then a thumbs up. So, thank you for all my screen particip, my Zoom participants. And Chuck has written all the stuff down. You're good, Chuck? Oh, and Chuck says it already knows. I don't think so. Okay. So, Serge is, I think you're voting yes, correct? Okay, I think we are good. Once again, next week is our?
Sorry, Angela, yes.
Oh, you do have a question? Yes, go ahead, please.
No, I don't have a question. I'm confirming I'm voting yes.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. So, I think we are good. Next week, we are here again for the candidate forum for school board, and then in November, we are here for the Safe Park. And that's it. Thank you all for your time and your commitment to our community. Thank you. And the meeting's adjourned.